Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Thursday, September 3rd, 2020 regularly scheduled Board of Selectments meeting. Calling it to order, I ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next on this section is our public comment. We ask that people in attendance who wish to briefly address the board do so. We ask that you limit to three minutes or less, and also do wish to comment, we ask that you please give your name and address. Donna, do we have anyone for a public comment?
Yes, Nikki Matthews would like to comment.
Okay.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Nikki. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nikki Matthews. I live at six-year-old Daniel's lane in Amston. I did not make it on the agenda for tonight. I think that may have just been because of the timing that I sent my email. But you can see at the bottom of the agenda in the correspondence is a full email that I've sent requesting the board address and adopt a resolution to declare racism a public nuisance in town. And I would, I appreciate it being added there, and I would appreciate it if the board can address and adopt this resolution.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
Tiffany Thiel would like to make a public comment.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Tiffany Thiele, 626 Gilead Street. I would just like to hop in and say that the Hebron Democratic Town Committee unanimously to support this initiative. These conversations are important, and we feel strongly that we, as a town, need to have them. And so I would also echo Nikki's comments, and I hope that you will consider this resolution and pass it presently. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other public comment?
There's no other comments noted at this time. If anyone would like to make a public comment now or at the public comment at the end of the meeting, please type your name and comment into the chat box. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda is good to know. Do we have anything, Andy?
Chairman Larson, we do not have anybody for that item tonight on the agenda. I'm sorry.
Okay, not a problem. Moving on, then the town managers' report.
Okay, so it's been a busy couple of weeks. So next Wednesday, we're going to be having a walkthrough at the RIM campus improvements, probably with a short punch list. So that project hopefully will be completed, and there'll be some small items. So that'll be wrapping up after a three-year project. So that's a good thing. That's a, that's a feather in the cap. The pipe replacement project at Hebron Elementary Schools is also completed, and I want to take this time to thank Mel Lecter and the building committee and everybody involved in regards to that, because that was a big feat. I know John was involved in that. I believe we're the first school, or if not the first, one of the first two to have that type of project completed. So Mel did a great job along with spearheading that for the town manager and the board of selectmen, and I think he should be recognized. We appreciate all his hard work and efforts, and it was a job well done.
If I may ask, I want to say that was what, literally like a five- or six-year project from when we actually first started in getting involved in that, wasn't it?
I'm not sure. I started dealing with that with Tim Van Tassel as a superintendent, and they tried many methods to try to, you know, bring that in compliance, but it just didn't work. And we finally replaced the pipes under the guidance of John and the people that we hired, and it's completed. So hopefully the parents feel a little bit comfortable now sending their kids there. It's, it's been tested very well.
Can I just interject? I think it is six years. We had three years of the, of the phosphate system, and then, and then we've had this year. Mel and the committee did a fabulous job. This was a high-pressure job. And, you know, I mean, every week there was something, managing the consultants, Marriott managing the construction crew. And I, and I should say also the Board of Education, you know, Heather and Tom Baird and all those, and everybody. We are the first to completely replace all of the pipes, and it needed to be done. And it's, it is, it's a, it's a, it's a great thing for Hebron and that, that the Board of Selectmen, without question, you know, just did it, even though it was a million bucks. I think it would cost us $400,000 or $500,000 with the state aid. It's just, it's just such a great thing for the community, and I just want to thank you all, too. It was, it was a wonderful thing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, as a town manager, we're going to work on, we're going to be bringing two people forward at the next agenda to look to be seated on the Wetlands Commission. We had someone leave. There was a meeting scheduled for next week. The gentleman that we were hoping we'd appoint cannot make it. So they can't have their meeting next week due to lack of quorum. So it's important that at the next meeting, I think it's the 17th, that we interview two people that are looking to be seated on that, and we try to move forward if at all possible. So been working on that.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, just a point of order, just for people? I think people are waiting around for the, for the public health and racism discussion. Generally, I don't think they understand that generally when something's introduced to the Board of Selectmen, we don't really consider it till the next meeting so that we have time to look at it. Is that your understanding also, that we'll put it on new business for next, next meeting?
I'm sure it's going to be on new business for next meeting. I mean, there may be a couple of comments. But, you know, they're more than welcome. I don't believe it, this is a really long Board of Selectmen's meeting. So I would be more than welcome to have them at least listen in if they so desire.
Right. So I mean, that's what I'm saying, is that generally with any matter before the Board of Selectmen, it's introduced, and then the next meeting, we take it up. And so I just don't want anybody, you know, waiting around. It's going to be discussed next meeting.
Okay, well, as I said, I'm sure there will be some, some discussion tonight, but there's definitely not going to be, I would think, no action taken tonight.
Okay.
Okay. Andy?
Okay, so you want me to finish the town manager's report, or are we going to go into something else?
No.
Sorry, Andy.
That's okay. No, no, I just want, if you wanted to jump off, I'm fine. I'm not.
No, no, no. I just don't want anybody to waste their time, that's all.
Okay. Um, okay, so a lot of the stuff that I'm bringing up is for the public. I've sent the Board of Selectmen these emails throughout the week. So I don't mean to sound repetitive, but we've been working with the finance department to our secure, our AAA rating, and we've done that. We've got acknowledged from Standard and Poor's. So we're moving forward with that bonding project. That's been taking up a lot of my time and my staff's time. And that's a great feat for the town. The town should feel very proud that we retain the AAA bond rating and this climate that we're in. So I'd like to give kudos to all the town staff, especially the Board of Finance, for doing a great job. That's, that's an A on a credit card, or I'm sorry, on a school report card.
And Elaine and her staff.
That's, that's who I meant to recognize, Elaine Griffin, in the Board of, in the Finance Department. We're also, we also have been working with the building committee on the roof library. They're meeting tonight to look at some of the, the underlayment that needs to be addressed and how to best put that roof back up there. There's been some questions, so they're assisting with that. So that's moving forward. We're also moving forward with the energy savings program, the lighting. And the HVAC is being replaced at the library. The lower level has already been completed. They're working on the second level. They're hoping to get into the senior center, and then the public works, and then also the HVAC people are starting to install that. So that's moving forward. We've been working with the Parks and Recs Department on a new staffing arrangement and a Rich Calarcos replacement. We've been working with the unions and the Parks and Rec staff, and we will be bringing something forward at the next meeting to the Board of Selectmen to review. We've been working with the police on the back-to-school and the staffing. We had to pull one of the old cruisers out of retirement and resurrect that to try to work with our elementary schools to make that safe for all the kids going back to school. They have our full cooperation, and it looks like we're going to be able to meet their needs, at least for the first couple of weeks, and we'll see how that goes. Ted's had their car show last Sunday along with the Lions Club in the town of Hebron at the Lions Fairgrounds, and they had approximately 300 cars. It was more than anybody anticipated, and it was a great showing. It was a great function in our town. Everybody observed, for the most part, the COVID regulations and wore masks. So that was good for, for the town and Lions Club. And that's all I had for the town manager's report for now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Could I, I have a question. Do we work with the Green Bank at all with our solar stuff?
I haven't worked with them lately. I've been working with the energy people on the library. I haven't been in contact with the Green Bank for a couple of months now, to be honest.
Okay. Thank you.
One of the, one of the, one of the issues, John, is I need to talk with the schools and the superintendent, and he's been just so inundated. It's not for the lack of trying. It's just he's been really bogged down, and that's where the big savings would be on the schools. So we're, they're waiting for us to reach out to them, and I've just been giving Tom a little bit of space.
Okay, great.
I was gonna say, between with COVID, reopening of schools and all of that, is their hands have been literally just inundated time. Everybody's best friend or biggest enemy. Okay, Donna, next?
So next up on the agenda is old business. It's the update on the COVID-19 long-term recovery in the town department and school reentry and reopening.
Okay.
Did you want me to go through correspondence? I can do that.
I would try to stay along the, the outline, the agenda.
Yeah, well, we did receive the letter from Nikki Matthews. That is in correspondence.
Right.
What that letter, the cover letter is requesting that the town Board of Selectmen adopt a resolution. I know John kind of brought that up earlier, so I'll turn that over to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, well, and I'll start with my first question, or my first comments. You know, while I appreciate the resolution, I for one don't really think it goes far enough. I think there's other issues also with sexism, freedom of all religions, gender equality. If we're going to do a proclamation, I would want to make sure that it's properly vetted and covers a number of different areas. And I know that Peter had done a lot of research on it, and I'm actually going to let Peter talk, too, if he would. You're on mute here.
Yeah, I have to find my, I have three screens, so unfortunately sometimes the mouse gets lost. I wouldn't say a lot of research. First of all, it's Nikki or Nicole? Would you like to be referred to as Nikki?
Nikki, but either.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to thank Nikki for taking the time to, to put together such a passionate and articulate statement. So I know this is not a time where we're intersecting with the public, but I do appreciate the time she took to put those thoughts together and put such, again, a passionate and articulate statement on, on an important issue. And I think, the thing for me, what I'm very, I'm interested, obviously, in it being on the agenda, so I applaud that. And I think the thing that, as we look at a sample here, which is obviously, you know, a sample that some other towns have taken, I'm assuming literally, based on what I read, but I don't know if they modified it at all. So I look forward to discussions about how we might think about this as it's specific to Hebron. And I guess to your point, Dan, is, does it go far enough? Okay, so let's look at some of that language. There is definitely a, a health component in this. And so do we need to, as, you know, think about that? Is it, is it addressing what we're trying to address? There are a lot of asks and significant, well-thought-out asks about what the expectations are for us going forward as a governing body. And when you look at systemic racism in general, obviously, it's pervasive. It's sort of subtle. It's articulated in some of the, in a lot of the dialogue here. And so thinking this through about how best to think about that, I think is really important. So she really starts us, and I think one of the comments that she made, have made, might have made, I thought it was, was her in terms, I think, if I'm remembering this correctly, is sort of helping the town start to move forward with, with this dialogue, I think is great. But I also caution the board that we need to think about it, and really think about it, not just immediately reacting and adopt this specific resolution without sort of thinking through it. If there's accountability here, how do we define that accountability? There's a lot of things there. Do we have the capability in the, the things about data collection and, and, and all these other things that we have to do? Do we have the resource to do that? And it doesn't mean we shouldn't work towards those, but I really, I love the idea as a starting point. I'd be interested, excuse me, even some other samples. So gathering information to think about how best to approach this, I think is, is good. I hope we're given the patience, or, you know, to, or hope we're giving the reaction of, hey, we're moving forward, but allow us the opportunity to think through this and how best we can do this with all of our constituents in mind, with the town and what we're capable of doing, and also probably most importantly, thinking about this is a path, right? It's that single, it's that first step in a journey. And so all of us here that are going to be making these decisions are making them for our future leaders. So I love the idea that this is on the agenda. I love the idea that we can talk through it. But I ask the board to think about how we can do it in a way that's patient and thoughtful and allows this as a starting point and not feel necessarily the pressure to immediately do something without really thinking through how best to do it with all these different things in mind. So I just had some, some thoughts on it, and clearly it's a, it's a big issue, and it's a significant issue. And I think a lot of times, if you're not careful, you, you sort of leap to something. But this is something that is going to be going forward, and I think we need to take it with all the seriousness of which Nikki has presented it, and then also be given the opportunity to really think through it and how best we can structure it to accommodate the structure of Hebron and Hebron's government. So that's just a couple of thoughts I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Also, there's, there's a possible component as to whether or not it would require any kind of a charter change. I don't know. These are things that, again, would need to be investigated and flushed out.
I think, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think you bring up a great point, I can just, because I forgot about that. I think it's a great, it's a great idea, is that when you look at systemic racism, you're talking about within the fundamental structure of our town governance. You know, that goes back for hundreds of years. And so, right, you may be talking about a charter revision, which is not within the purview of individual boards, you know, a Board of Selectmen member to actually make a charter revision change. And, you know, if that is indeed the case, we have to sort of think through that, and I want to make sure that the accountability then is structured in such a way that if I were held accountable for a charter revision, well, that's not in my purview individually as a selectman. And that very well may come about when you talk about systemic racism. You're talking about potentially thinking long-term about a change to how we govern and how we structure our zoning laws, how we structure our charter, if it indeed goes, you know, in that, in the many steps that are needed over time to, to go down this, to have this journey. We, I just, I don't want to be vague, too vague, and I want to make sure we take the accountability seriously. And also, again, what's in our purview, what's not, and make sure we, we set the proper expectations so we don't disappoint. We're clear. And, and again, the charter revision is a great point, is that it may cause that, but that's not within our purview. So we have to just sort of bring all those issues forward, and I think that's, you know, I think we should. That's, that's being responsible, board, is to sort of think that way. So I think that's a good point. So thank you again for.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, give.
As someone who has served on charter revision twice, I definitely agree with you that, I took out my charter and started looking at it today to see how this resolution would fit into it, whether or not it requires any change. I never got far enough, as I had other obligations, but it's something that definitely bears looking into if we need, you know, and what Peter said.
Thank you. John, I think you wanted to speak?
Um, yeah, I think what Peter says right. I think that's great. I think we should carefully consider it and apply it to the town. I don't think we should necessarily use somebody else's resolution. And I think we should go through it carefully and systematically and discuss it, and I look forward to that. That's great. I think that's a wonderful thing to do, and I think we should invite citizens to, to come and, and testify and give their view of it, more, more than, I'm glad that Nikki and Tiffany and Amy are there, but let's get it, let's get other people to come in and give their experience and tell us, you know, their experience of racism in, in, in Hebron, and then go from there. I think that's great. It's a discussion. It should be, and we should listen. Let me just say, you know, I've been walking around now for a month and listening to people, and it's a great thing to do, you know, as, as a selectman, to listen to what people have to say about things. You know, it's, it's, it's surprising. So like I said, I look forward to it. You know, I hope it's on, on the agenda for next time as new business. And whether we have a motion next time or not, I think going through it patiently. It's a huge issue, a big issue. We should, we should do it carefully and with sensitivity.
If it's going to have any weight, it has to be done carefully. It's a big process.
Mark?
I agree with John that the, the resolution as stated may not be completely applicable to Hebron, and it's kind of general and vague. So we've, we should fashion our own. Peter used the word immediacy. Is anybody aware of any instances where somebody hasn't been treated justly, and we need to take action to resolve that? Because if that's the case, then we can't wait on that. So if anybody's aware of those things, I think we have a mechanism to, to take care of that now, whether it be through the police, through the town manager's office. But if there are any people that feel that they've been mistreated based on race or any of the other factors that, that determine who's discriminated against, we should address that. So I've been here for 15 years, and, you know, being a Hartford and Bloomfield kid, it's a little different for me to be in a completely white community. So I think it's a little disingenuous for all of us, and maybe that's probably not the right word, but it's an incomplete gesture on our part to sit as a whole group of white people without having minorities and people who are actually experiencing the problem here to express what that problem is. I wouldn't be comfortable sitting with a bunch of white people figuring out what's best for minorities.
Mark, I totally agree with you. It's, it could be patronizing. And, and I'll just say that I have invited people, people that I've met, people of color that have lived here, to come and, and talk, and it's uncomfortable. But I will say, you know, I say this, there's a couple of, a couple of conversations I've had in the last month that have changed my view of things, not completely, but just have affected me. And I've asked those people to come and, and talk, and they, you know, they're thinking about it. You know, it's a, it's a difficult thing to come and talk about. But let me just say about one conversation, which I had at the Black Lives Matter, who I talked with a person about my age, and she's, she's, you know, a person in the, in the community. And, and what she said was, she talked about a series of, of, you know, events, none of which, I guess, we'd call them microaggressions. You know, like something, a term that I would not have, like, bought into, but now I do. But, but, but slights that, that she experienced over 40 years in Hebron. And which added up. I mean, she, she was crying when she was telling me these things, and she's not somebody that I think really cries a lot. And so it, it changed my view about, like, what small things, think are small things, have an effect on, on people and, and how, you know, how we could, how we as a community could, could respond to that. And, you know, and so that's not, I mean, that's, 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 you know, one conversation. But I learned a lot. Let me just say, I learned a lot in that conversation. And I think more conversations could, I mean, would be very appropriate. And I think as a community, we would learn a lot about how people are, experience, you know, the town, you know. I, and I, like I said, there, there are things I think that, I see a tunnel, I mean, a, you know, light at the end of the tunnel where we, if we have this discussion, there are things that we can do to make people feel better, you know. And so I'm, I'm glad, I applaud what Peter said. Fantastic. I think that's great. Let's have this discussion. Let's invite people, and if, if, if they're comfortable, have, you know, people of color who live here come and, and tell their experience. I think it would be completely enlightening.
I hope you can get her to come, John.
I've asked. I've asked, and she's considering it, but.
And, and Mr. Chairman, a great example of somebody who came out here as, as a police officer, Ricardo Martinez. The only racism that I've seen in my 15 years here is how a few people have treated our police officer, Ricky Martinez. And I got to give Andy credit, because Andy, in many ways, has looked out for Ricky when there's veiled, very thinly veiled attacks on Ricky because he's a minority, but acting like it's because he's a police officer is why, why they've made their comments about him. And Andy, you've done a phenomenal job in making Ricky feel at home here and protecting him. I'm not saying it's not rampant, but it's hurtful, and I know Ricky's hurt. And I would love, and I'll extend the invitation to Ricky, too, to explain how he's felt at times when he's come out here to risk his life for a community and has, has been mistreated at times by the public.
Thank you. Andy, did you want to say anything?
Um, I, I think this has been coming for a while, and I, it wasn't if, it was when, and so now it's here. I applaud the Board of Selectmen to dive into this and, and look at the objectives that they're requesting in this resolution, instead of just passing it and making it be a feel-good. I think Peter's comments are spot-on, that you really have to look to see what they're going to be held accountable for, other than just passing a resolution and say, hey, look, we, there's nobody here that condones racism. But I think they, if it's going to get into the zoning regulations or the charter, I think you have to know what the expectations are before you pass the resolution. With that being said, it sounds like you're willing to do that. So I applaud the Board of Selectmen, and I think they took this request seriously, and their, their response back to it is more than just a feel-good response. I think they're going to look at it seriously and do and look what they can do to make sure that the objectives are achievable.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so it will be continued on, on the agendas for upcoming meetings. It would be nice to see if we could get maybe a few other examples of, of other types of proclamations on these, on these subjects, and then kind of work through them to see, A, what fits. through them to see A, what fits and B, what, to just make a proclamation without having something achievable, I don't feel is.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, and I was thinking about something you said, John, earlier when we were doing the Hebron Open for Business Task Force. Is this sort of really within the confines of a workshop? Because within the structure of our meeting, it, it's sort of you have your public comment, you have the Board of Selectmen, you have your public comment, but we want to have an exchange. We want to have, uh, you know, maybe that environment, John, to the, the woman you mentioned, that is such a heartfelt story and very disturbing. And, and like we, like I say in business, it's, you know, we don't know what we don't know and that's what's dangerous. And so we need to hear from her and we need, how do we do it in an environment in which maybe she is comfortable sharing it? And so she would be thinking about this in a different structure, like a workshop, so we can have, you know, a, a more conducive environment to, to dialogue and exchange. I don't know if that's right, but it seems like we, we might struggle with the meeting format to sort of get the full, we need to know a lot right away. So I'm just thinking about that from a structure perspective, Mr. Chairman.
You're correct, Peter. Uh, there's no way that I can see it being really effective doing it along in this kind of thing. That would be a workshop if we are going to get people to come in and, and discuss their experiences, or it would at least be a, a separate, you know, date for that.
A special meeting which allows, especially which allows a format, a different format to get the most out of it that we can as soon as we can. So like in this case, you know, we don't allow the public is not able to exchange, you know, jump in in this format, but I'm sure they would like to, but it's just not the format. Whereas it maybe that workshop environment would allow for an ability virtually for us to, to just really talk through a lot of this very quickly. So it isn't something that lingers. We don't want it to linger. Well, and we want to make it so it's as welcoming as it can be for those to John's point that we're trying to draw in to provide some additional context, color, perspective on the issue. So we can make a decision with all the facts and all the perspective, to your point, Mark, which is great. I mean, I, I don't have the perspective that you do based on how I grew up. And so I need that perspective and I, I can read and surmise, but until I talk to people and hear from people that have experienced what you're talking about, like what Ricky did, I, I just, to be honest with you, it's hard for me to relate and it just is. I understand, but I, I don't necessarily relate to it and, and I need to, um, to make a better decision for the town. So is it a different format and how do we do it in a way that is quick to allow this to keep going and build the momentum that take that second step in the journey? How do we do that? So that's really as I, as I'm thinking about this, I, I don't want to lose any momentum on it. I want it in the right format.
So I, that's a great idea to have a, a workshop or, um, think about how to make it comfortable for people. Um, one thing that we might consider is, um, uh, you know, it's difficult for people to talk, um, but there are, I've met other people of color in other towns, Bolton, Marlboro, who I think would talk. Um, I don't know if, you know, the Board of Selectmen in Hebron want to, want to hear from people from other towns, but you know, the demographics are similar. You know, we are the, you know, we're all island towns. We have about 99% white. Um, and, um, they face the same kind of issues that, um, you know, people in Hebron have. Um, we could get more, I guess, a more broader sampling and more, um, um, yeah, we could get, we could get more people if we broaden the route for other towns too.
I thinking. What I almost like buffering, buffering.
So it's on the agenda, but
On the agenda, yeah.
But should the, I go, well, I'll ask the board, is it, should we also at this, because the agenda could be that it then moves to a workshop, but then maybe the fear is that, you know, and all of a sudden it keeps, you know, the substantive conversation gets, you know, gets, keeps getting pushed down the road a little bit. So would you think of this workshop as an idea in place of it, we can put it on the agenda, but at the, happening at the same time, a different day, obviously a different time, but, um, so how did you, how do you see that? Well, John, how do you see it? You see that like we'll, you know, schedule that as a special meeting next week. So it's in between. So we have more context before the next meeting when it's on the agenda, I'm assuming.
So I, I think that's a good idea. Like next week, we set up, next time we have a meeting, we set a path in between. We, we talk with, um, individuals who, who could bring something to the board and see how comfortable they feel. And, um, and then we have a listening, I mean, a listening session would be good. You know, that's, that's what I would say. A listening workshop and just offer it up and we're here to listen and, because I, like I said, I, I, you know, I've had, I've only, I've only had a few profound conversations in my life. This was one of them. This like hit me be right between the eyes. And, and I, I just thought anybody that listened to this woman for 45 minutes is, which is what I did and heard what she had to say, you know, it's not a panacea, but it's, it's, I, I learned something emotionally. I learned something about the town and about, you know, about black white relations and that I didn't know, you know, and I'm 61 years old. So what, what can other people tell me? Tell us.
Well, I like the idea of a separate workshop. I was going to propose that myself before someone else did, uh, because this is a weighty issue which we have to delve into and it, we can't do it at a meeting. We have all of other business to conduct. So I guess we have to give ourselves more work and have a separate, um, schedule for a separate evening.
Okay.
Would, could I put a suggestion to allow, um, Andy and staff to maybe come up with, some other proclamations, just so we would have a mix of what may be out there and also at our next meeting, have a couple of dates that we could actually have the special meeting. Cause that gives them a couple of weeks. Otherwise we're really as much, I don't want this thing to get spread out too far, but at the same time, you know, to Peter's comments, it needs to be done right. Uh, and I don't want it rushed. Um, Andy, would that be something that would be possible or plausible?
Absolutely. We'll, we'll, um, we'll reach out to other towns. I can reach out to CCM and see what has been, um, adopted and see if we can get some of the sample ordinances. And then also, um, we can look, uh, for dates for a special meeting and, and submit those out to you guys.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. And this is just to interject. Again, I, I, I think what we're looking for is people's experience in, in, in the towns, you know, not, you know, not experts, not, not at this point, just what people feel and what they have experienced so that we can listen and see, you know, what can be done.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, what, what do we have next then? Okay.
Uh, all business, um, updated in a COVID-19 long-term recovery in town departments and school reopening, reentry reopening. So on the town side where we, I didn't have it underneath my town manager's report, because there's a couple of things coming up through the agenda. So everybody knows we've been working with the schools. Um, they're going to start September 8th and they're going to give a green light for senior centers to start opening, but we're not going to rush into that. We're just still doing some things to make that safe. They're doing online programs and I'm, I'm not going to steal Gail's thunder for liaison reports, but we're working with them as well. So as far as that goes, that's the update that I have. The only other thing that may be a bone of contention, but I feel it's appropriate to bring it up now, is at the state level, we said we'd bring this up, we would ride the governor's executive order until that ran out, which is suspected to run out this week. But he's, um, the committee has proposed to extend that to February 9th now. And it doesn't seem, I know the Republicans have asked to have a meeting to hash that out, but it doesn't look like that's going to happen. So I think the Board of Selectmen either tonight or put it on the next agenda, have to make a determination of how you want to proceed with our executive order.
Okay. Uh, at this point, here in Hebron, I haven't, I have seen nothing that would warrant my quest to have the, uh, actions changed. Um, you know, you, it, it, the emergency declaration allows you that flexibility if it is necessary, uh, but you have not at this point used it at all out of line that I can see. So I, I'm comfortable continuing with this at this point in time. Um, I do know that there are still towns that literally are not open. Uh, you can't get permits. You can't talk to people. Uh, they, they basically, you have to call a phone number. They'll let you in one at a time. Um, and then there were other towns that are, you know, pretty much open for business. Um, I see our town as being the latter where we're open for business. You know, people are, uh, properly protected. Um, so I think what we've done has been fantastic to this point. Uh, but as I say, for the emergency declaration, I, I, I can't see a reason for changing that at this time. Um, I'll put it up for the floor. I mean.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The chime in on that. I think we should extend it to go along with the state. I, if something were to happen, somebody ends up sick like it just happened in Glastonbury and Andy is in the position of having to close a building, tell people they're going to be quarantined. He needs to move on that rather than get in touch with five selectmen. And I think we need to remember that Andy has never used his emergency powers. He keeps us in the loop all the time. We know everything he's doing. So I think we're, and with school opening and all next week, I think we need to, to keep that around for now. If things suddenly change in another month or two, yes, but right now I think, I think we need it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I concur with you and Gail and for all the reasons you've stated. Also, it's important that Andy's able to react unilaterally when complaints come in about people not following the proper protocol and taking safety measures when going into our businesses. And you'd be surprised at the number of people that either forget, just decide they don't want to wear a mask, are going to do whatever they want in a facility. And Andy has the ability to send the health department out or the police and say, you need to comply with this or you, you can't come in. Um, or else we're opening ourselves up to not only mismanagement, but another, a, a COVID outbreak. So, um, I agree with you and extend it further. And the same thing with the school. If a superintendent needs the ability, if there's an outbreak in a school, they just shut the school down. And Andy needs that same authority. And I've never seen Andy abuse his power in that way. And, and he's always under a spotlight anyway. So I don't, I don't see how it's even a concern.
I, I have something, Mr. Chairman. John, I know you had a different perspective on this in the past. Do you want to go next or I do, I, I, okay. I, I'm, I'm with the group, which, so I'm not going to belabor the point, but I have, uh, confidence, uh, full confidence in Andy and his team with the way they've reacted and managed through this crisis and giving him the level of flexibility, the, the ultimate level of flexibility in concert with, um, the governor's recommendation. I am in full support of. Thank you.
So, um, the emergency powers in the charter are, were given when Board of Selectmen was not, you couldn't reach the Board of Selectmen. We're, we're all in session. We, the, we have meetings. We can have more meetings. Operationally, uh, Andy can do anything he wants. I mean, as long as we say, and if he want, if we give him the power to close, close buildings because of masks are being obeyed, he can do it. It's different than with the governor, although I'm, I'm somewhat uncomfortable with the governor's order too, being, you know, a lover of democracy. Uh, governor is elected and he's not elected. And, um, so I'm not, you know, I'll vote against it because I, I don't think it's necessary. I think he has the power. He can have the powers as operationally and, um, and it doesn't, it goes against what I think the charter emergency powers were for. And, um, I don't see the point of it. I really don't.
Is there a motion that's been written up for this? Does it require a motion?
No, I don't think so. I think we're just going to maintain status quo.
Oh, okay.
At this point, it sounds like everybody is still in, or at least the majority are in agreement to leave it at this point. Again, I would like to bring it up as we get through and, and I could very easily change my mind after school's in session. I want to give it a couple of weeks to see if in fact, uh, there's any kind of resurrection of this disease. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm very, I'm, I'm very flexible. I, in, in many aspects, agree with John, uh, which I know he's probably going to be surprised at.
Yes, he is.
Very much with, you know, following constitution and electing and all that kind of stuff. But at least for another month or so, I, I just want to see how things play out. Um.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I may, Andy, do you need something, what do you need from us? Is this an FYI? What do you need from us specifically? Anything other than this?
No, it's the board, it's the board's decision. Um,
Okay.
You know, we said we'd visit this. We've, I think the board voted to go along with the governor up until the September 9th date when it would expire. And I, I know it got brought up at a couple of meetings and I, I guess I said, it ended up, let's wait till that expires and we'll, we'll visit it again. Well, here we are. So, um, it's, it's up to the board. Um.
Do you need a vote? I mean, you need a vote?
I, I just would need something in the affirmative. I don't need a vote.
Okay. No, I just want to understand the process. Okay. Thank you.
We can continue the status quo and, and visit monthly or every selectman's meeting, however you guys choose.
Well, I can see, uh, visiting it again about the middle of October. School is opening on a hybrid session next week. Uh, then it'll be in, uh, you're going to be bringing a lot of other people in and out of town. So I think I like having it for now and the middle, towards the end of October, um, seems, seems reasonable because it gives us the opportunity to thrash it out after we have some other data as to what's happening in town.
Okay, that October meeting, the middle of October would be October 15th because October falls, the, the first falls on a Monday or a Thursday, calendar and can't get the right day. Uh, it's, um, so.
So just to see, you know, if, if, uh, and I might, my fellow Democrats would probably are going to not be happy with this. I, I kind of agree with what the Republicans are saying in legislature that there should be oversight. And, um, because of the constitution, this is part of being in a democracy. And, um, so, uh, in this case, it's not the same at all because again, Andy is not even a resident of town. He's not elected to anything. Um, he's an operational, he's in an operation and it's, you know, it's a little bit, it is different than what the charter envisioned and extended, you know, emergency order. And again, you know, if somebody can show me how operationally, um, uh, you know, this, this helps things. I, I just, I just don't see it. I mean, I don't see how, um, not having our, our consent when, when we call an emergency meeting at night. So, but like I said, I'm not only in the minority, I am the only that thinks that way. So let's move on.
I would, I would suggest that we revisit this October 1st. That would be literally one month. Uh, and this way we'll have some history with what's going on with the schools. You know, what's going on with the colleges, um, and possibly what's going on in the world. Cause a lot of the, the other countries that quite literally thought they had this, this, uh, pandemic well under control are now having issues where it's spiraling out of control again. Uh, that would be a month. It would. Would do I get a concurrence on that?
I'd prefer the middle of October, but I can go along with that.
I'm with Gail. I prefer the middle of October, but I I'll go along with that.
It seems to be a reasonable compromise. I'm good.
With what you propose.
I'm I'm at your service.
Okay, we'll bring it up October first. That's our first meeting in October. And that'll give us a little, you know, hopefully a little bit more information within to make judgments. But, okay, next.
Okay. Update on the Hebron Open for Business Task Force.
I know you get fired up, Andy, when this is this is my time to talk about this. So I appreciate the enthusiasm in the introduction. Yeah, so this will, I I think we're starting to build some momentum here. So I'm happy to report Donna, well, first of all, Donna and kudos to you, Andy. You know, and the town staff, Donna specifically, really doing a great job to support the task force. And Donna is doing a ton of work. So Donna, thank you very much for all that you're doing to help us execute on these many things that we're doing as a task force. So great job to Donna. So thank you, Andy, for allowing me to take up some of her time. I try to try not to bug her too much, but thank you for that. So we are just a couple of quick highlights. We're above four hundred members on our Facebook group, which is awesome. The we just launched a scavenger hunt. So, you know, you'll see some green rocks around town. So that's great for kids and family. So thanks to to the folks that really pushed that. Heather Pettit was it was instrumental in that as well as as well as Jess from Something Simple. And so they did a great job of sort of like a little subcommittee of launching the scavenger hunt. So that's that's live. We have twenty three participating businesses in our Sops local plan. We've got our first two, four drawings. So we're giving, we have a ton of gift cards. So we've been able to push, we have probably seventy gift cards that we've purchased and to help, as I said before, to help to bring some revenue into these local businesses as well as to bring people into the local businesses. There was on the Community Voice channel. So thanks to, thanks to Matt, Mal and Mary and Lightyear for their filming of A H M's piece. H M did a allowed us to to talk about Open for for the Business Task Force. And so yours truly, so if you want to, you know, some good video, I won't watch it. My wife said I was okay. So but I encourage you to watch watch it. I think, you know, it's good television. But anyway, an opportunity to present what we're doing and why, again, out to the public. So that's out there. We have a bingo program that's going to be launched in October. And and I see Neil on the line and and Neil doing a great job of of being an integral part of of the committee and and bringing forward some good ideas. So you'll see more there. And the interesting part, just as I as I wrap up here, is that we also had an inquiry from some from a town official in Andover looking for our assistance in potentially launching something similar for their community. So clearly, they're seeing some, and and for me, if we can, Andover is part of our community. I mean, I view us as regional, I think of Ram as the community. So if we can help support our 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 folks in the region, like Andover. So we look forward to some continued discussions there. And I will keep you posted on that because, again, if we can spread that spread that work over there and help them as well, it would benefit our broader community. And and so more to follow on that. So I thought that you'd be interested in hearing that as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Great job, Peter. And and the entire committee.
Okay.
Okay, so that if that's it for old business, the next item would be seven A on a new business. And that would be ever source update. What I can report is I've met with the town of Hebron's liaison from EverSource, who, by the way, is going to be leaving her post in October. I've worked with her for approximately ten years. She's done a great job. Her name is Pat Bands. Nevertheless, whatever we think of EverSource, she was a very professional and responsive person. So we'll wait to see who her replacement is. But in in doing so and still working with her until October, this is for John's ears. We've made some progress in the old Slocum Road tree trimming. We've got a verbal that they're going to willing to come out there and spend some more time for us at their cost to try to see if we can't push that area back, seeing as so many frequent outages. For Gail Richmond's ears, she's committed through the engineering department on the Hope Valley, Reedy Hill area to put more switches in. So if there is any interruptions, it won't affect so many people in that area. So I've got a commitment on that as well.
Gee, thank you, Andy.
And the bigger, the bigger project that we're working on that affects the three towns is the emergency management directors for Andover and Marlboro had written letters and they're taking them up at their boards of selectmen to try to get an agreement where we can make Ram the regional generated shelter. And it looks like that's going to prevail. So as soon as I get those, I do have some verbal commitments through some senators that represent the area along with possible representatives to help us try to find some seed money with that, to get that appropriately generated, at least a shell of it. So in in climate weather without power for as many days, I think it's happened more often than when I was a young man. It seems like it's more of a norm to be out more than a couple of days. So it's only appropriate that this board of selectmen take action and try to enhance that resource in the center of our town and also our regional towns to facilitate that. So it can be open for warming stations, charger stations, showers and meals. So we're working diligently towards that. And we're going to try to get some funding through the state and the feds to do that. So that's a, that's a project that I'm putting on my list, one of my A projects. So I'll keep you posted on that. But I think that's good news considering what we went through with EverSource.
So I I have a couple of questions. They appear as or Pura said that they were suspending the rate increase. And everybody keeps on telling me and I keep on seeing in my bills that it's still there. So I keep on reaching out to people. Nobody seems to know when this rate increase is going to be suspended because it hasn't been suspended yet. They say the next bill, then we get the next bill and it's still still high. I mean, incredibly high. I don't know about you guys, but my my electricity bill's doubled.
Yeah. I think we're all going to agree with you, John.
So I I reached out to Kathy Austin and various people. And again, we're going to get some information back. But maybe we should write a letter. That's one thing, one concern. The other, the other concern I talked to you about, Andy, was, you know, if we could identify the hotspot areas in town where they get, you know, they get it the worst. So you you've identified Reedy Hill, Gail's house, Old Slocum.
Yes, John.
And but also the north part of town, right? I mean, Daly Road, they seem to always be out a long time. I don't know other, what other places. But if we could identify those and and call them to EverSource's attention to see what can be done, you know, proactively, that might be helpful.
Okay. What? One thing that, and of course, being out and working in that storm and still doing aftermath stuff from that with what I do, the the amount of devastation equals anything I've ever seen in this town. You know, and I've been involved with the fire service. I have gone through hurricanes in this town. This rivaled, if not beat, all of them for the amount of damage. It would be nice, I think, or it would be helpful if a technician or representative from EverSource could actually come out and explain how they prioritize their crews and how they initial or initialize the repairs. And, excuse me, and also get into some of the hazards that their their people face in the attempting to restring, re-energize, reinstall that infrastructure. A lot of people, and I I've heard a couple of people say, well, why don't they start with the small neighborhoods first? The problem is like with any good tree, you have to have a good base. And so they they have to hit those areas that affect emergency services. And they have to affect those areas that affect the greatest amount of infrastructure. When they get those up, just like on a tree, they then branch out. So those neighborhoods that are out on the ends of the branches, if you will, sadly, are going to be the last ones that are that are going to get addressed just just because of of the complexity of bringing that type of system back up. And I think it would it would help people to have an understanding of of how they go about that. I think it'd be good, good information. And then the other thing I always remind people is when you do live out in the country, you have to be a little self-sufficient because bad things happen and it takes time to fix it. So I I don't know if that's something that could be done, possibly as one of the public service type things. I don't know, Andy. I don't know.
I'll reach out to them, see if they're willing to come for me. And I I think they will.
I think it'd be a good education.
So yeah, from my perspective, there's, there's two things. You know, there's, there's the everyday workers that that come out and help us. And you can't dispute that they did a great job and and, you know, they're there. I mean, that's just the way it is. But they don't make management decisions. And, you know, they're not responsible for the disaster that that we had of, you know, seven or eight days without power, six, seven, eight days without power. And that really has to do with, you know, EverSource's management, their their leadership. And we asked in the state of Connecticut for three things. We asked for reliable, renewable and and cost-effective energy. And as far as I can see, they've failed on all three, basically. And so the question is, you know, I I love to know, you know, tactically, how they 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 apply and come and respond to us. That's that's one question. But a larger question is, is why the big fail from this company? It would be one thing if we had a choice, you know, if this was not, if we were in a, you know, a a market that had competition. But we've given these guys a monopoly with guaranteed profit and they failed us. And that's, that's just the bottom line. They failed us.
That I do not disagree with at all. That's that's on the other side. And I would actually love to see an independent inquiry into that whole aspect of, you know, all of our public utilities. You know, there's obviously, I I can't believe, I would love to know, do other states have this type of rates?
No.
No one's ever answered that. And if not, then why us?
Right. And it's, and, you know, now, you know, you know, I'm in this debate now. And people say to me, you know, well, you know, it's, there was a decision three years ago, four years, can't blame EverSource. I'm just saying, you know what? I wasn't part of that. That company should have had twenty years ago, should have had the vision to come up with a better product and for better service. That's that's on them. And it's, you know, it's on the legislature too. But it's on them to, it's on the company itself. And
Well, they are throughout New England. So if other states do not have the same rates we do, my question is why?
Yeah, well, they have similar rates, a lot of them.
And that's something, as I say, I don't know. But, you know, that that's another issue. And I agree with you on that. Next.
Next, without further ado, waiting patiently, we have our town clerks' update on the elections. And I felt that it's very appropriate to invite Carla to speak to the board and whoever else is listening on this video or virtual meeting.
So I here's a lot to talk about. I don't think you want to hear, you know, an hour's worth of story. But, you know, the process of absentee voting really is laborious and cumbersome in normal times. In normal times, am I talking too loud or am I?
You're doing good. You're doing great. Thank you.
In normal times, our office would probably process on a presidential election up to four hundred absentee ballots. These ballots have, they're like the six-part packages. So you actually have to put a ballot package together for every single person who applies. We, because of this pandemic and the option for people to vote by mail, which really is absentee voting in Connecticut, we are expecting to process between five and six thousand ballots. And if we just look at the primary as an example, you know, about seven hundred people voted by paper ballot. Four years ago, in the presidential primary, fifty people voted by paper ballot. So we realize we have like eight thousand one hundred and plus voters, registered voters in town now. So we realize that we need to have help and we need to have a process that will work efficiently. So the best, you'll see it in the town manager's report. I put in an outline that is somewhat flexible, but an outline of what I think it's going to take to process all these ballots in a timely manner. One is to set up the meeting room. We want to claim the meeting room across the hall from my office and set that up with all the ballot supplies, a couple of computers for people who are going to come in and work. We've ordered scanners, we've ordered label makers, label printers, because when you're mailing election stuff, you do need to have a certain size font that can be read by the post office. And, yeah, we have one person that is going to start on September fourteenth. And she will be, what we did was we looked to the pool of experienced election workers. So we have a group of people that have worked at the polls for many, many, many years. So we invited a couple of these people to come and consider working with us. And and we have three people that can make the commitment. One will be full-time from September fourteenth through the week of the election. And one will be part-time. Actually, the two will be part-time. One part-time person will start on September twenty first. And it will be afternoons. Our mail comes in at ten and we'll have the ballot boxes. People will be placing their applications in those. So we'll have plenty of work for them to do, I'm sure. And then October fifth, the third person will start coming in part-time. And what she'll do is she'll, she'll stay as long as there's work. When there's no work, she'll leave. But I anticipate there being plenty to do. The ballot packets that are six-part, we want to try and get those together so that when the applications come in, we can just, you know, process using the, using the state program that we're required to use. We can process the applications and the ballots and get them out in the mail to people right away as quickly as possible. So as much as we can do ahead of time, and when I say ahead of time, I mean, what we can do before October second, because October second is a Friday and that's the first day the ballots come available. So we want to have, we just want to have as much done in advance so that on October second, all the applications we've received can be processed and be ready to be mailed. And I'll be taking them physically to the post office so that we're not going to be putting them, you know, in a mailbox. We're taking them right to the post office. I've heard a rumor, I don't know if it's true, but I've heard a rumor that the post offices in Connecticut are going to do as much of the election mail in-house as possible so that it will, the mail won't leave Hebron. I don't know if that's etched in stone, but I know that's something that's being talked about. Where currently, our mail will always go Where currently our mail will always go through Hartford and in an effort to try to help with the election um, mail, I think they're talking about doing it in-house so that it will save time and be, get to, get to our people, get to our voters quickly. Um, yeah, so we're having, we're going to have people come and help. Um, we are very concerned about social distancing and our own personal exposure. So we're going to be asking people to please use the ballot box and, and use the mail unless they don't feel comfortable with the mail. And there will be a point in time where people aren't going to want to put their ballots in the mail. That's understandable. That's why we have the ballot box outside of, uh, my office at the town office building. So I'm just, I've got a whole list of things that it would take me an hour to go through. Some of the things that we're already experiencing, um, that's taking a lot of our time during the day is phone calls with questions. Um, there is an advocacy group. It's called Power, it's called vote.org. They have sent, ahead of the state, they have sent absentee ballot applications to residents in our town. I don't know if they're sending them to everybody in the state. I'm not sure how that works, but it creates a little bit of a problem for us in my office because it creates confusion. The state is going to be, but they're late, uh, in my opinion. They're going to be mailing applications for absentee ballots to every, every registered voter in the state of Connecticut. And they're supposed to start that by the middle of this month. Well, the advocacy group got a jump on that. So today I spent quite a bit of time, you know, with people asking about that, um, and, and asking about it because the information on here, on the form that they send, some of it, I mean, it's accurate, but the zip codes were wrong, as Andy and I discussed. The, so they're telling people to mail their applications to the town hall and they give the people the wrong zip code. So there's a little bit of a problem. Um, you know, so those are two little things I'm dealing with right now is how to talk to people about the applications that they're getting from the advocacy group. You know, eh, eh, if they want to use that application itself is fine. Um, but it doesn't have the barcode, that the state's application will have a barcode on it, which will make the process more efficient for us as election officials trying to process these ballots in a timely manner. We've set a very high bar. Um, as far as what, what we intend to do is if we receive absentee ballot in the mail or in the absentee ballot application in the mail or in the ballot box, we, our intention is to get the actual ballot together and mailed in the afternoon that day. So that's our goal. Whether or not we'll be able to keep up with it, I don't know. Um, we've talked to Andy, you're, and Donna and I have had conversations about how many people do we really need? Um, because Fran and I will be able to, to work with the election workers, we're, we're going to be working side by side, hand in hand. We're going to be auditing all the work as we go through the day to make sure. Um, the program sometimes will skip. So you have to audit the information you've put into it to make sure that everybody's ballot was prepared that applied for one. So we, um, we're going to be doing that. And with the phone calls and we still have to keep up with our normal, um, everyday clerk stuff. So if we need to have more people come in to help at the very end, um, we'll deal with that. Um, there, there is something, I don't know what the solution is, but because the front door of the building is open to the public, everybody comes in the front door, obviously, and everybody stops at my office. Because there's no other door that they can see that is, my door is, is closed, just like your door and many of the other doors are open, but you can't see them. And I have a big window. So I'm on the phone trying to talk to these people who got an absentee ballot application from vote.org and I have two people standing at my window, like banging on my window, trying to get my attention and I'm pointing to my phone saying, I'll, I'll be right with you. And those two people weren't even, didn't even have a question for me. It was the tax office and it was, you know, going down to the manager's office. So I would like for you, um, to consider at some point when we're really kicked into full gear with these absentee ballots, to close the front door and ask people to use the side doors. And then eventually the people who really need the, anything, questions with their ballots can, they'll filter up to our, our section of the building. And then they can exit that front door. It's just a thought. Uh, many town halls have, um, well, because of the primary, I had to go visit many town halls. I had to pick up ballots that were mistakenly um, sent to a different town and I had to deliver some that we received that belonged to another town. So Columbia Town Hall is locked to the public. You need an appointment. And when you walk in, um, they want to know who you are and they take your temperature. I had to go to Coventry Town Hall because, um, when we had the storm, it, it, um, it, the storm knocked out the frontier connection to the, um, my computers that we use to access the state election program. And I have to use that program in order to issue the ballots and account for, you know, what's coming and what's going. So I had to go to Coventry Town Hall. They gave me a workspace and I worked two days over there on elections. And as I enter their building, we have to sign in and somebody takes your temperature. There's a receptionist there. And that receptionist also directs people to what department they're looking for. And, um, in East Hartford, if you need to access East Hartford, their building was locked and, um, whichever department you needed, that person would come to, out to the front. You didn't go into the building. I didn't see anybody go into the building, whether it was planning, whether I had to visit the city clerk, they come outside to meet with people. So you know, I want to be able to protect myself and my colleagues and to keep the interruptions at a minimum. And I'm not sure how we can work that out. And maybe you guys could take a week or so to think about. Um, how to help me out there.
Well, that would actually be something I would think it'd be Andy's purview to decide how to, to best mitigate those issues. Any question for?
Uh, we have two side doors to the building and with proper signage, maybe people would use those doors if they need the tax or the assessor. Um, and even the town manager, we have the staircase, we have the elevator. Um, yeah, I, I don't know. Or maybe put a receptionist at the front door to direct people. I don't know, but it's going to get really, really intense. It's going to be very intense. And quite frankly, I went into Andy's office last week and just said, I'm scared. And just, I want, you know, we want the process to work. And we're getting the, we are so dedicated. You know, the election workers are a group of people who just want to do the job right. And we want to make sure that everybody who wants a ballot gets one. And in, and we're going to be, you know, you figure if we do 6,000 ballots, if we do that between October 2nd and November 3rd, would be November 2nd is the last day we can issue them. And we're there five days a week. So that's an enormous amount of paperwork and data input to the state system, the, the, the information that we have to enter into the state program. It can't be done after the fact. It has to be done while we're, I'm, I'm happy to give anybody a demonstration. Um, it has to be done for every application and then every returned ballot has to be inputted into the system because we print the official voter checker list, checkoff list from this system. And that checklist is going to show next to everybody who, who has returned a ballot by, a paper ballot by mail, absentee ballot. Next to their name is going to show an A or little mark next to their name so that the people at the polls know that that person has already voted. So the work that we're doing has to continue to, these ballots have to continue to be processed as we move along. None, none of it can wait until after the fact. So.
Uh, do we have any kind of a dollar amount of what this is going to cost and who's, is, is any of this being funded by the state?
Yeah, uh, yes, but they, they've told us yes, but they have not told us how much.
Okay.
And, and guess what? And guess what, guys? We have to, we want to fix these little ballot packages, right, in advance so that we have several thousand already ready to go and those applications which are starting to come in now. And the state hasn't sent the supplies yet. So we have no supplies. And in a month from now, these ballots are supposed to start going out in the mail. So that's why we need extra hands. Um, I suppose we'll figure out, we're going to do an assembly line kind of process. And I'm formulating that in my mind. I'm sure we'll come up with something that will work. And, um, yeah, we're just going to have to, we're just, we have to do what we have to do. We, because they've told us, we've got to do this job. We need more supplies, we need more equipment, we need more people. And, um, yeah. And if it works as well as they want it to work, we might be voting this way. You know, uh, the Secretary of State wants us to be voting by mail, period, at some point. It's part of what, um, she's going to do in her tenure.
Thank you.
Oh. Oh, don't thank me.
You're, you're the one on the, on the battle front.
I'm, and I, and I'm telling you, I'm scared. We're going to, we will do what we need to do to make it work, but you know, you can't, you can't do this kind of work exhausted either. I mean, you have to, you have to have your faculties together, you know? When you're processing, uh, every single ballot has a serial number. So, you know, eh, you can't, we can't do it in shifts. You know, eh, and, and we'd never done it before. All I know is that Fran and I could not possibly have done any more ballots than what we were able to manage for the primary. And still do, and you know, you, you're, you're picking and choosing and prioritizing what doesn't get done. So so if we process that many for the primary, we definitely need, need more, more people and more equipment. And, uh, you know, we're ordering supplies, everything that we think that we're going to possibly need. We're getting it ready. And hopefully, when we get our supplies from the state, we'll be ready to really just jump in with both feet.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Questions? Anybody have questions?
That was a good presentation, Carla. Um, I got to, you know, really understand how that whole process works. So, but that's quite a tough job you guys have.
I think, um, last week in the managers report, I put in, um, just a, a page on voting information, on how to vote and the River East ran it and, um, I'm trying, I'm going to work with my granddaughters to do some kind of little public service announcement for social media at some point. Um, this week in the town managers report, I, I put in an outline pretty much what I've spoken about this evening. So if you can read that, um, and see how you feel about that. Um, if you have any ideas of ways to help us. There could be things I haven't thought of yet. I'm all ears. Um, yeah, but please read through it and, and, and ask, feel free to ask me any questions that you, um, that you might have. And I have one more thing and then, and then I want to ask, answer questions if any of you have them, but I do have a grant application that I'm working on. Um, it hasn't been easy because the vendor we want to work with is, um, a lot of their people just are not in the office or even actively involved. Um, but if I can put the application together for historic preservation, um, I'll want to put it on the, on the agenda for your next meeting. If I don't, if I don't get it on your agenda for the next meeting, um, I might miss the deadline because I, I haven't heard any, um, extension for this particular grant. So so turn the page back to election. Do any of you have questions? Okay.
Thank you.
I talked your ears off.
Thank you. That was good.
Thank you again, Carla. May I be excused?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, um, but how further do I know our, our chairman of the Economic Development Commission has been waiting patiently. Next up on the agenda is Economic Development Commission update. Neil Amway is here to discuss, uh, and provide an update on the initiatives and the materials from the EDC and that they've been currently working on. And then also I think he wants to get some further guidance from the Board of Selectment moving forward. So Neil, if you're still with us and, uh, feel free to jump in.
I am. So I think tonight, uh, we're just going to go with a highlight. Okay, so, um, one of the items we are working on is something that the EDC called the flip book. Um, this is essentially, I would kind of refer to it as an elevator pitch document. And it will both be in print format with tabs along the side as well as digital format. And the digital format will then provide you with hyperlinks, um, to such as the Ram School District and other items like that. So the EDC is working with, uh, CHA on that. We have finished the text aspect. The next aspect is to work on the graphics and the hyperlinks and review those. So we will be doing those at the September and October meetings. And so we are posting for November or, or, excuse me, November, December to have that, um, fully written and formatted. So we envision printing it as well as putting it on a USB memory stick. We can also put, uh, the video on there as well. And so it will give us some other marketing tools to use, uh, when we speak with promotional developers or, um, uh, potential businesses coming to town. So that is one item. The next item is, uh, greater focus on launching the Hebron Business of the Season. So the idea here is to highlight, um, the business of the season, so four seasons, so four businesses a year. Have CHA do a short article, take a picture and then do it as a press release to the River East. So we highlight a local business, but also then it also highlights the EDC and the town, you know, as a resource for other businesses and for residents to see, um, that we are active. Um, another item, and I know I've talked to Andy about this as well as Michael Leary, is we are reviewing is we are reviewing our membership in Metro Hartford Alliance. The town currently pays approximately $1,400 per year for Metro Hartford Alliance. And we're really evaluating the return on the investment. You know, Metro Hartford Alliance is a great organization. They tend to be focused on larger communities. And we tend, Hebron geographically is on the eastern borders. So we are doing evaluation of the Glassbury Chamber of Commerce, the Collin Chamber of Commerce, the Colchester Business Association as well. We really, as well as, you know, the Wyndham Chamber of Commerce as well. And for each of those geographically, we tend to be on the borders. But which one really fits closest to our business mix and that we can contribute to, but also we can get some benefit from. And then just internally, you know, we're looking to reformat the monthly economic development activity report that we got from CHA to highlight some of our activities. And then just looking forward, I think there was a first impressions assessment done. We gave a presentation of that. So there was some general recommendations in the back. So we want to just track those down and really, we did it paired with Durham and what those recommendations were. You know, we had the Great Facade Improvement Program. There's something else where the town can, you know, work together with the businesses for some of those. And then, you know, one of the things we wanted to actually do too is add closed caption to the Hebron video. This is something that came up at the Hebron Maple Festival. You know, it's a great video, but when we had it playing at the Hebron Maple Festival, if you couldn't hear the words, I think you lost part of the content. So, so those are just some highlights as to what EDC is working on. You know, our goal is to provide either a written or verbal highlight about every six months or twice a year at the water slide.
Thank you, Neil. Any questions of Neil or EDC questions you can try to answer?
Thank you. And just, and just for Peter's edification, hey, Penelope. Peter gets, Peter, Penelope is a constant on the Hebron Task Force with me, so.
And they come as a unit, so we have to give her her due.
And again.
Is she behaving herself? Is she behaving herself?
We did a walk earlier, so she's been better today.
Thank you, Neil.
How do small businesses, especially the outlying businesses, the ones not necessarily, you know, considered or visible per se, you know, in the center of town? How, how do those small businesses, or do you, do you have many of those small businesses? The, you know, the different construction companies, lawn care companies? Do you, do you have much or many of them in, involved in the Hebron Economic Development?
We do, and I think that's something that we've always been conscious of. You know, the economy is not simply along, you know, within the, within the center of the core, you know, and everybody thinks the Giulianos. So we certainly do reach out to them. And I think some of the Hebron Businesses of the Seasons that we're highlighting initially are really those businesses that aren't necessarily in the core. Because whether you're in the core, you go to one business, you see another business. You know, so we are looking at those other businesses that are off the side streets to highlight them out, to highlight those.
Great. And where would people who are interested find information out about the EDC?
It is on the website. I mean, we have a, obviously, you know, I think the, the, the resources available on the, on the Town of Hebron website are just phenomenal, you know? So it's a very dense EDC website. Or really call the Town Hall and Mike, Michael Leary is a great initial point of contact.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Mr. Chairman, next up on the agenda is the draft agenda for the September 17th, 2020 meeting.
Okay. Can that be, yeah, there, thank you. Okay, again, if anyone has anything to add or what have you, please get it in so it can get placed on the agenda. Perfect. Okay. Next, I believe would be our consent agenda.
If there's no other new business, yes.
Okay. We have the two, two months of minutes.
Chairman Larson, excuse me, we do not have the August 20th minutes. They were just filed this week and we didn't send them out. So we'll continue that on the next agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. I was gonna say, I don't remember seeing them, but that doesn't mean a lot. So basically it would be the August 13th, 2020 special meeting.
Chairman Larson, I found, I found whatever I'd like to bring up on the minutes.
Please.
Okay. Right in the front of public comments, it lists the name of the individual on Hope Valley, and as I live there, I know who they are, as Jay Sewicki. There is a Sewicki, but that's not who this person was. This person is another person across the road. And the name is similar, but it's not quite that. And I didn't get a chance to correct my own spelling of the name. But I believe it has a letter or two missing from it.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
If someone could do some research on that and get that correction?
Yeah, I'll talk to him and get the name.
We'll do that.
He lives right across the road, right next to, next to Menard.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the tax refunds as, as listed. So move the Hebron Board of Selectment approving, approve the following consent agenda item of the August 13th, 2020 special meeting with corrections and the tax refunds as noted. Going across, I see John's first.
John Collins, aye.
And Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And Mark?
Mark Rubera, aye.
And myself, Daniel Larson, aye. Motion passes. Next, I believe would be.
Next is liaison reports.
Yep. Perfect. So Mark is first.
Couple of sentences. We've been working hard all summer. Tuesday's the first day of school. We're anxious. And we're ready to embark on this risky endeavor.
Thank you.
Good, Mark.
Gail?
Well, the Board of Ed has not met again since the last one. But as you all know, school starts next week. The Commission on Aging met Wednesday morning. The number of ways that they are trying to reach out to the citizens with the three full-time staff that are calling, all the aged, they're following up almost daily on some of the people with needs. The communal meals, as you know, can't take place at noon time in the center. But they're going to be starting a grab and go. They will come in one day and they will get four frozen entrees along with the milk, yogurt, and other items. And they're working on getting virtual programs in, by cooperating with other towns so that they, this virtual material can be out there, YouTube and the like. And the library is very successful with its opening hours. And they're still doing curbside, which is very popular. That's it, Dan.
Okay, great. Next would be Peter.
Okay, for the Board of Finance meeting on August 27th, again, they, they do a great job, Andy did a great job of updating some of the, the financial transactions. A couple of just things to note, there was some dialogue on, around the Board of Ed looking for something to do with a no lapsing fund. So some more funding flexibility, so something new that's, that might, that'll likely continue to be part of a dialogue. So we'll obviously get more information on that if, as applicable. But so there was some discussion about a, some more flexibility with some budgetary, or budgetary flexibility for the Board of Ed, and so some dialogue around that. There was some discussion on supplemental appropriations in terms of sort of built around the process, the process, and some discussion around the school costs for COVID, if, you know, and as it was starting to potentially escalate. So confirmation that we have 1%, the Board of Finance says 1%. And Dave's on the line, if I get this wrong, Mr. Vesey. But 1% of the overall budget excluding RAM before it has to go to a town meeting. So that would be about $213,000. And so there was some discussion around supplemental appropriation and just something to keep an eye on relative to the challenge surrounding COVID. Continued discussions on the bond debt, so that process is, you know, is going very well and some other financial transactions. So that's a quick update on the Board of Finance. The Parks and Rec, I noticed on the upcoming agenda that there's some staffing discussions. A good part of the meeting was built, was structured around how to staff Parks and Rec management going forward with Rich Clarko's pending retirement turf management and how to transition and his proposal ultimately to view him as a potential part-time resource as we, our expenses ultimately will align with the revenue at some point. But right now, obviously, a significant amount of revenue is absent from Parks and Rec due to COVID. So there's some very interesting dialogue on that. And again, I see it on an upcoming agenda, so I'll reserve my comments. As liaison, I didn't quite agree with their approach, but I will obviously reserve my comments to when it's applicable on the agenda. Discussions around open space continued, some good dialogue around that. Obviously, some budget assumptions were continuing to be presented. We do some meetings with Andy on that. And, and overall, again, a continued discussion really around some of the programs in terms of the fitness classes outdoors, the basketball, the status of that. Right now, there's no place for practice or games. Just a lot of struggles to, to figure out how to bring programs forward that are so needed by our community. And still just a tremendous amount of unknowns there. So a lot still going on with Parks and Rec. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Well, you heard about Economic Development and Hebron L Water Project passed the, the water tests. There's no lead, very little, actually a lot less copper than I would have thought. So all good there, and that's it.
Okay, great. Andy?
As I said earlier, there's a walkthrough at the Ram Facility project that's wrapping up. Thank God that came out to design without hardly any change orders or any flaws. So hopefully we'll wrap that up shortly. We submitted a grant for the extension of the sidewalk. So we're gonna wait to see if we get awarded that steep grant to proceed with the town's portion of the sidewalk. And then we're still working with the WPCA. And they're working with the Town Eleven to figure out the flows and the calculation on how we're gonna charge them. And we're moving forward with designing that project, getting ready to put it up to bid for the upgrade set of pump stations.
Okay, great. And the only thing I have is the, with the Hebron Historic Properties, they had the Rosie the Riveter. It was an incredibly good program. It was a perfect day out. And I'm gonna say, I wanted to say that probably around 200 people were there. They had a gentleman from Colchester who brought up an authentic World War II Jeep, literally authentic right, right to the last hubcap or the last bolt. And they also had the bloody historical education and entertainment group who actually set up a signal station setup where they had the tent. They had the actual radio equipment wired, had it all set up. So it was quite a great day. And a lot of people were able to get through and see a lot of the, the World War II mementos that have been donated to the Hebron Historic Properties Commission that are housed in the, the observation post. One of the other things that I learned is that that may be the last observation post, at least on the eastern part of the United States, left or still known to be in existence. So I, I think that is a fantastic tribute to Hebron and its dedication, you know, for, for remembering our past fallen heroes. And so it was, it was a great day. So those people who were there, I think everybody came away learning a little bit. It was, it was a nice event.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, and John may add something. I spent a few minutes socially distancing from John on the hill, watching the, the event unfold. And you've been talking about it for quite some time. To really, really a terrific job by so many people, really, really well done. I got a lot out of it. Clearly, an event we, we should be proud of. So well done.
And well done to the Historical Society or Historical Buildings, I think. I liked the people that dressed up, really got you, gave you a sense of the 40s. And of course, the Brownies that dedicated the Rose Garden, they were, they were great.
So. Very. Thank you. I think that's all I have. Gail?
I was just gonna say, is it time? I make a motion to adjourn.
You gotta send us any more public comment?
Public comment.
I'm sorry, correct.
We do have public comment. Amy DiMaggio is, has been waiting to make public comment.
Okay.
Hi. Thank you very much for your volunteering. And I appreciate that the time is ticking away, so I'll be quick. I wanted to thank you for your willingness to move forward on this discussion about racism. I had a few thoughts. As helpful as it might be, I think maybe that asking people who are, who are black or who are other ethnic minorities to come out and speak to people who represent a system that's oppressed them is a really big ask. Though it would be very helpful, I imagine, to understand what racism looks like and how it's impacted them and how it's embedded in our system. I think that it's, it's, you might not get the feedback that you're looking for. And I was wondering, as I was thinking about it, maybe that the workshops may need to be focused on how to engage people to get honest representation, how racism has impacted our neighbors. And that might be, there are organizations that help us to understand. It might be a survey. There might be other ways to get the information that you're maybe looking, looking for. Also, other things can be done as well. Hebron isn't alone in this history of racist policies. And as I mentioned in the chat, there's a forum scheduled to bring our attention to some policies, maybe zoning and affordable housing, that we have no idea of the impact. Well, I'll speak to myself. I have no idea of the impact, being a white woman, from growing up in a white community. And so I just invite you to join us on September 17th at 7:00, just to learn about the historic, the history of, of these policies and maybe some action steps of how we can just introduce, moving forward, introduce policies that maybe can bring us to, in a, in a different direction. So I thank you for your time and for your volunteerism.
Yep.
And we have one more public comment. Nikki Matthews would like to comment.
Okay.
Hi, I'm gonna speak again. Thank you for taking this seriously and addressing it. So one comment that Mr. Larson had made that he's not sure if this actually goes far enough because there are so many other issues like misogyny, et cetera, that need to be addressed. I agree, those are very important issues, but they're separate issues. And I think putting them all together waters it down and it lets them detract from each other. So I'd like to try to keep this focused. As Amy mentioned, asking people of color to come speak about racism or trauma that they've endured, it's borderline unacceptable. It's asking people to relive their trauma. It's extraordinarily hurtful and dehumanizing. And it's asking them to do emotional labor for something that we can do ourselves. There's so much out there that we can read, that we can watch, all the information's there. And that's stuff that we can attain on our own without asking people to relive what they've been through and what they've experienced and things that have been extremely hurtful to them. And like it's been said, it's, it's unlikely that people are gonna be willing to do that. And it's not really okay for us to ask them to. And also, I just, I don't feel that making, somebody had commented that a group of white people making this resolution may be patronizing, and it's not. It's being an ally, it's being a proactive ally in this. And racism is a huge topic. We're all constantly learning about it. Nobody's an expert on it. And I just ask that you all be very open to learning and to, to hearing what those of us who have been doing a lot of work in this area have to say about the effect of racism on people of color and the effect of our actions in learning about racism on those people as well.
Thank you. Anyone else, Donna?
There's no one else at this time. That's it.
Okay.
All right, I'm back on. 8:51. I make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
I can bring Carla back on if you guys want to listen some more.
I was gonna say, if you could just get us.
Dan, don't, shouldn't we vote on this?
It's recorded, we're good.
Yeah, we should vote on adjourning.
Oh.
If you could just get us some information on that, September 17th meeting, whatever she's talking about, might be nice.
We have a selectives meeting that night.
I was just going to say that. Yeah.
Okay. So much for that.
Well, before you go, I'm gonna be on vacation out of state next week. Donna's gonna be in charge.
Okay.
Okay, Andy.
Enjoy. Have a good time.
Well-deserved time off.
You have to quarantine when you come back?
No, I do not. Well, not, not as of right now.
Okay.
That could change.
Enjoy your well-deserved time off.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.